How are you? I said hi, you didn't hear me. No, no, no. And I've told you before, I love ese color. I love that jacket of yours. I love it. Every time you wear it, I love it. I really, really do. Yes. Mr. Q, estamos listo? Okay, gracias, Mr. Q. Okay, let's call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, to the City of West Miami, regular city commission meeting. Today is Wednesday, June 2nd, 2021, and it is 7:30 PM. This evening, the clerk is excused, so the city manager is our city manager and city clerk this evening. May we all rise for the invocation, please? Dear Lord, thank you for blessing us with today, and I ask that you guide us to go forward with pure hearts and peaceful minds. Amen. Madam Clerk/City Manager, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Of course. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Thank you. Mayor Yolanda A. Rodriguez.
Present.
Vice Mayor Eric Diaz-Padrón.
Here.
Commissioner Candida Blanca. Commissioner Juan M. Blanes.
Present.
Commissioner Luciano L. Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have a quorum from staff, City Manager Yolanda Aguilar, City Attorney Jose Villalobos, and as you said, Madam Mayor, City Clerk Anette Gonzalez is excused this evening, and I am acting as the ex-official clerk.
Thank you for that, Madam Manager. Next item?
Next item on your agenda, item number three, I'm sorry, item number four, presentation of minutes for approval for the May 19th, 2021, regular commission hybrid meeting.
Moje.
Thank you. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Next item is item number five, public comments. This evening, I have a speaker's card filled out by Mr. Elliot Asbell, and he wishes to address the commission at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Asbell? You know the...
Oh, Madam Mayor, please.
You know the drill. Name and address for the record, please.
Elliot Asbell, 15345 Southwest 77 Court, Palmetto Bay, Florida, 33157, and corporate citizen as relates to the Sunnyside Motel and Trailer Park here in the City of West Miami. I wish to address the administration and the commission because since the last meeting, I've given thought, as I assume many of you have, as to the auditor's report. And I want to share with you briefly a number of few conclusions I've come to and also even fewer proposals that I think you should consider. But I don't see this, I see this as a beginning. I can, I don't see it as must be. It's just what I personally would do if in fact this was my business facing the situation that you're facing. This is what that represents. It should be obviously in conclusion that the subsidy of the various enterprise funds from the general fund, it was pointed out by the auditor that this was not proper. When I'm using the word, whatever he said, he said, "My memory is not that good," but it was somewhere in that vein. The first thing I think we'll all agree to, the amount of subsidy to the various enterprise zones is a very significant number. And because it's so significant, in my mind, it's impossible, and you shouldn't even entertain, trying to correct it with one massive situation of addressing the issue. Rather, I believe you should address it partially now. And by now, I don't know, as you get into the budget hearings, what you think should be factored into those budget hearings. And I believe that when and if it's necessary, and I believe it will be, you will have to resort, since we're not going to clear up the whole problem, you'll have to resort and think about a second partial. And I won't go beyond that at this point. What I do suggest is that the second partial really not be thoroughly entertained until after the auditor's next report next year. Why? Number one, you will have concrete evidence of what you have finally adopted and to what effect that has dealt with the problem. My own feeling is there are two goals. Goal number one is for this administration and the commission to be able to say to the auditor, "You have begun to address the situation." And I think that's what he was urging. One can disagree about how you begin, what steps. I'm saying have to begin, cannot kick the can down the road. He should be able to come in here and praise this commission in terms of what it is doing reasonably to address the situation. Okay? I believe that, initially speaking, that whatever I address as a recommendation for an enterprise zone, I believe the commission and administration should continue to have that on a quarterly billing basis as the water, for argument's sake, is at this point in time. My primary reason for wanting that is because I do not want this commission to be accused of burdening anyone. I've been here long, often, to know how conscious this commission and administration is in terms of budgets and being concerned about budget. On the other hand, I don't think we should hear, "This city does that, and that city does this," because this is this city's problem. What's happening in Coral Gables or happening somewhere else, I don't know, and I don't want to know. I think you have to look at this and own this as your problem and address it reasonably. There are two particular enterprise funds that I am addressing, and none others as the, as you start. There were a number of enterprise zones that the auditor spoke about. I'm only going to address the others. And part of that is a reason not to burden and have a burdensome amount on the citizenry. As you know, I already stated that the commission should look at the water fees and that there be a two-tier system, one for residents, not change from the present, one for residents, and keep it the same. Don't burden them. You heard me say, I don't believe that the commercial corridor has, over my 50 years, done next to nothing in terms of actual support, financial or otherwise, in regard to the City of West Miami. And they should, because what you are enables them, as it enables me, to have sustainable profitability. The one thing that's different than me and apartment houses in the commercial corridor and all tenants in apartment houses, typically you have a one-year lease. On commercial properties, typically you have multi-year leases, three, four, five, up to 30. Also typically, depending on their length, there is a built-in clause for increase during the term on a yearly basis, either CPI or some fixed percentage. So I'm just trying to say, and then you'll hear the numbers, I want you to understand that and understand, like I said to you, this does not affect the jewelry store operator at all. The amount of water that operator uses is minimal. And the increase is going to be minimal. I looked at March 31st of Sunnyside and West Haven, let me just push to West Haven. West Haven has its trailer park water meter, and Autozone has its own meter. And I'm just saying that so you can picture the numbers. In Sunnyside, March, we paid $14,821.46 for three months. If you break that down and divide by four, then you come up with a number of three. That's, that number represents a breakdown of one-fourth of the total year. Okay? I am proposing for Sunnyside and other commercials, properties, that there be a 10% increase, not discriminating whether it's an apartment house or it's a jewelry store and a shopping strip store situation. No, 10%, that's it. In regard to Sunnyside, if you gave, divide by three months, and on per month, dividing by three, that comes out to $494.05. Certainly, I do not consider that onerous. But you need to look at the aggregate number and how that changes the amount that you need to subsidize. It will. You just have to do a multiple of. And again, you're not doing anything to any of the home residents. I'm totally against that. At this point in time. I can't say what will be five years from now or whatever as relates to this issue. In West Haven, and it's the trailer park, which is 17 trailers, again, I'm recommending the three-month billing of March was $3,585.41. Again, I'm recommending a 10% increase of that three-month billing, which would be $358.40. Definitely, in my mind, not onerous. And per month, you're talking about $119.47. Now, if my business or any business cannot afford those numbers, then it needs to be out of business. That's how reasonable I think these numbers are. And I believe you should adopt them, but I respect you may see otherwise. It's just my proposal. The second and final, even though there are more, enterprise zone is your garbage zone. Okay? Waste. I am proposing, and this number is going to sound like a lot. All I do is ask all of you who have a great deal of experience, when was the last time we raised a garbage fee? I can't remember being raised either during or certainly by the end by our district's six commissioners, Mayor T. I don't remember in the last 40-some-odd years it's been raised. I know it came up. I know at one time it passed and then was revisited and shot down, is my recollection. In any event, I am proposing a $100 increase. And again, I don't want to hear what day county's fee is or this community's fee is. This is your problem and how to start addressing it. And the goal, A, that the auditor can heartily recommend that you have recognized and are addressing the situation. Yes, he understands you don't want to burden what's realistic and what can be burdensome. I don't think any of this is burdensome. The three-month billing of that $100 increase in garbage breaks out to $250 every three months. Breaking it down to one month, it breaks down to $8.33 in one month per household. Breaking it down to a week is $2.08. I cannot believe that anyone living in the boundaries of your city, and for that matter, anywhere, can't find within their personal budget $2.08 a week. To me, that's incomprehendable. I don't even think they have to give up anything, but certainly, maybe they give up a can of beer, a pack of cigarettes, an extra toy or whatever. Certainly not going to have any impact on their Christmas shopping or what they do within their family and the family budget. In any event, I thank you for listening. I am going to give this paperwork to the city manager, who basically will have the task of moving forward with the recommended budget, which I think needs to include some plan or numbers addressing the subsidy to the enterprise. I tell you what I would do, with this my business. What you choose to do, I have to respect. I certainly wouldn't go less, and I wouldn't scream if you went more. But I can understand reality of wanting to go. And I wouldn't go more now. I'd wait for concrete results of the effect of the budget, this year's budget, when the auditor comes, and then have solid factual basis to really get a good hold on what you're facing, which now it's just a philosophical thing, even though it's real numbers. Thank you for your attention.
Elliot, as always, thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Madam Manager, if you will indulge me, I see that we have a very distinguished guest in the audience, so I would like to take out of order at this time, let's bring item nine, committee reports, Report of the Mayor, as the next item, please.
Yes, ma'am. Item nine, under Committee Report, Report of the Mayor. It's recognition of distinguished visitor, the Honorable Ileana Garcia, State Senator, District Number 37, and presentation of recognition for her contribution to the City of West Miami, requested by Vice Mayor Eric Diaz-Padrón. Welcome, Senator.
Welcome, Senator. Thank you for being here.
It is an honor for me to be here today. This would actually be one of my first presentations, one of my first meetings in what I think is one of my favorite areas in my district. Now, the rest will probably say I'm jealous. But this was a very distinguished area for me. I walked this district. I received a lot of love in this district, and it showed in the precincts. And I'm very happy to say here today that I came back with gifts for the area. And once again, I'm very honored to be here.
Thank you, Senator. At this time, if we could all go forward to present, we have a special presentation for you. If we could all come forward, please?
Gracias. Thank you so much.
Mr. Quintana, could you please bring the camera? Thank you.
Excellent. Excellent. So, like I said, this is my first as an elected official, so this is very special for me. Today's a great day. As many of you probably already know, the governor did not veto our water project here in West Miami. And fingers crossed that this will be one of many appropriations that I will be able to deliver for the area. Interesting, you were talking about water. So we were able to secure 350,000 to continue critical improvements to West Miami's water infrastructure, which is so vital in general for the Miami-Dade area. The infrastructure here, to my understanding, is 80-plus years old. It was installed back in 1940, and it was given to the city in 1955. And we all know that the cast iron mains are corroding over time and only have a service life of about 30 to 40 years. So as for the 2019 meeting, I think that went on here, West Miami loses between 50 and 100 million gallons of water per year in leaks, and it's an equivalent of 200 to 300,000 dollars in losses. So we want to make sure that we save every penny so we can still buy those cans of beer and continue to enjoy this wonderful community.
Thank you, Senator. I believe Vice Mayor had something...
Yeah, I also wanted to add that aside from advocating for us in Tallahassee on appropriations, she was also, well, first of all, blowing on my phone every time there was any opportunity for anything related to COVID. She also was, she also donated to us 5,000 masks for our seniors that went out to all of our, all of our seniors who had wheels.
Correct.
And frankly, every time that she's given any resource, the first thing she does is call our, you know, call for our community to get them. So I'm very, very thankful. I'm very happy that you are a senator and you are advocating for us every day. And I'm, I'm very glad you, you finally were able to make it out here. And we're able to give you some wallpaper for your office.
Very nice, very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you for everything, Senator.
Gracias.
Thank you, Senator. Look forward to seeing you again. And we'll definitely see you in Tallahassee next legislative session, knocking on your door for, for more money. Okay? All for the water, okay? It's always for water. Okay, Madam Manager, back to the order of the agenda, please.
Item number six on the agenda is a Report of the City Manager. Have a brief report submitted late this afternoon. As you know, as you know, I've reported via email that Miami-Dade County issued the June 1st, 2021 taxable values as required by Florida Statute Section 200.065 Perrin 8. And based on the municipal list, the City of West Miami ranked number two countywide in growth. This document officially kicks off a 40-day intense window for us to prepare the submittal of the preliminary budget schedule for presentation on July 21st, 2021. Mrs. Leong and I have calendared separate meetings starting tomorrow morning with department directors to discuss budget preparations. A more detailed, informative budget memorandum will be issued by the office by Friday of this week to some, to our staff members, addressing some of our goals, requesting some information as we prepare for the upcoming budget year. Once we collect input from staff, we will proceed to meet with every member of the city commission individually, as we do customarily, before we put the budget presentation together. Gotti will be sending out calendar invites for our budget meetings with the members of the commission for the last week of June 2021. That gives us three weeks to get a clear path of where we're headed from a staff or administrative perspective. The next item, unless you have any questions, the next item on my report is the Passport Office. We just implemented, thanks to Mr. Quintana, a web-based calendar for passport appointments. This initiative, and Madam Mayor, I have to give you credit for this because you saw how bombarded, if you would, we were with walk-ins. We'd never had this type of experience in the past. So we had to go back and huddle. And I know you offered this as an alternative to the passport system that we have. And the web-based appointment or calendaring of passport appointments is now online. If you go to our website, it takes you right to the site for anybody wanting to apply for a passport. It's called westmiamypassportservices.com. It'll give you a calendar, and you're able to select whatever day and time is convenient for you, for you or for anyone in the public. This should assist greatly with reductions of call for appointment. Not 100% because the calendar is live now, and some people still have some pointed questions. But I believe it's going to be what we needed to, you know, to get over this, I want to call it, very, very busy season. Appointments seem to be working better, and it allows staff to attend to the business of the city. We also have less public in our lobby area right now for the passport. And we're able to contain them pretty much to the passport section, to the portion of the addition dedicated for passport services. We've limited passports to 30 per day, five days a week, and we have every reason to believe that the revenues will be consistent for this year, the balance of this year, and next fiscal year. Memorial Day 2021 that just passed, over the weekend, we ordered a U.S. flag, as we do every year, honoring our fallen heroes and that those flowers are sitting in, by form of a United States flag, in a wreath outside City Hall. And the city did broadcast, or rebroadcast, the tape that was used last year on the city website. That concludes my report. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to respond to those.
Thank you, Madam Manager. And I am so happy to hear that the passport appointment online calendar is working well. Very, very happy to hear that.
There's a couple of glitches that were working, but Quintana has done an outstanding job with creating that, that software for us and uploading it and just putting it out there. I think, I mean, the minute it went live, people were already making appointments.
I'm so happy to hear that we, that we finally got there. Very, very good. Thank you for that report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Are there any other questions for the manager on her report? Hearing none? Next item, Madam Manager?
Next item, number eight on the agenda, is Report of the City Engineer. Frank Alonso is here this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Alonso.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. I just have two brief items to go over. As you all know, we're nearing the end of the water project. As I kind of reported last time, things are proceeding well to the end here. Hopefully, by the end of this month, we should be pretty near completion. I did get an interesting question from Commissioner Blanes, which I think I'll address because I'm sure not only you, but residents in that area probably have a similar question as to why we are putting the services back in the rear easements. So the county does have a program where they're doing those conversions to the front. The reason they're doing it is for serviceability, that the meters are more accessible to them. And, you know, if they have issues with a meter or a leak, it's more accessible for them to do. or a leak, it's more accessible for them to fix. Historically, our system here has had those easements in the rears of the properties. And when we started this project, when we started that first phase, we decided to maintain those easements mainly because of cost. And I'll explain, and that was what I was explaining to the Commissioner. Picture a block, you know, you have about twenty homes in a typical block, about ten face one street, ten face the other. Replacing those mains in the easement is one pipe. So we put in one pipe, we reconnect all the meters, we go home. If we do it the other way, the conversions, we're putting two pipes on both sides, on either street, that front those homes. And the major cost really, that actually doubles the cost of pipe, but in addition to that, what the county does, and what we would have to do, is go into each individual property and change those services from the rear to the front. So we would have to go run new plumbing in every single property to make those connections to the front. So really, at the end of the day, it was an extreme cost, and we were trying to maximize, you know, basically, how much impact we had in the city area. So that was a decision we made early on, to maintain the easements. We also have remote meters, so it's not like we have meter readers that need to go back there. So it's, you know, it was a lot of reasons why, as a city, we decided to maintain those easements. Now, what we have found during construction is it is very difficult to construct back there. The, you know, the alleys are very small, and the contractors, as they complained to Commissioner Blanes, have complained to me as well, that it's very difficult to do work back there, particularly in that area of the city where the ground is really rocky, and they don't have a lot of room to maneuver. So breaking down through the rock and getting down to where they need to get to has been very difficult. So we will be looking, as we go forward, in the next phases of the project, looking forward, we'll look at that option of doing the conversions and, and kind of do a cost-benefit analysis as to how much it would cost to put them in the front versus keeping them in the, in the easements. You know, we did that analysis initially based solely off material costs, but taking into account the time and effort it's taking to do those changes in the back, it may prove to be worth it to do the conversions. But, so we'll keep that open as an option going forward. I, I think we, at the end, will maintain the easements, but, you know, we will look at it as an option. I just, I thought it was a good question, and I'm sure people are wondering why we're, folks that understand what we're doing, I'm sure are wondering why we're keeping them back there when the county has, has been switching them to the front. There is no, no standard or statute that forces us to put them in the front, so we, that's why we maintained it that way. So just wanted to brief you all on that. I, I thought it was a good question, and going forward, it'll be something that we definitely look at in subsequent phases. So that's part of my report. Second part of the report is today, we did receive a communication from an FDOT engineering consultant who are wrapping up a design for Southwest H Street. So I just wanted to bring it to the Commission's attention, that there will be a project. We don't have a timeframe yet. We were just notified today, so I will follow up with DOT to get some timeframes. But essentially, it's a triple R project, which in DOT lingo, that just means resurfacing, restoration, and rehabilitation of the road. The project will be from approximately Seventy-Fourth Avenue to Fifty-seventh Avenue, so it'll cover the whole frontage of the city. And it'll be milling and resurfacing of the entire roadway, restriping it, repairing sidewalk, broken sidewalk, broken curb and gutter. They'll be replacing all the, all the curb ramps to bring them up to current ADA standards. I believe there's lighting upgrades as well. So it'll be a full kind of rehab of H Street, not a full reconstruction. It's something that they do probably every ten years or so on these roads. So it's coming up. The design that I was provided today was pretty far along, so just based off what I saw, that we were probably looking at construction sometime next year. But we'll get some, some dates from the DOT as to when that's going to occur. I don't know if the city manager received any dates yet, but...
I do, I do have a date, and I believe a calendar has been set out, sent out to the Commission. I think I calendered you as well for a public hearing that's being put on by the Florida Department of Transportation regarding this project. The hearing will be in this chambers. We actually thank you to, to you all for authorizing the use of the chamber. We're going to televise that and broadcast it live through the website to give as much exposure as possible. And we'll know some more details at that, at that public workshop, I think it's scheduled for June 30th at 6:00 p.m. I do know that Mr. Quintana will be meeting with Rodolfo Román, who is handling the assembly of the public hearing workshop information. And we're, we're, you know, we're assisting him in, obviously, providing a venue, knowing that this will have an impact on the city, and hopefully, it'll be a positive one. So we'll recheck the dates and send you a reminder calendar.
Yeah, and currently, we're, we're just reviewing the plans for any impact to our facilities and our roads. So we will, if, if anything comes up in the review, they'll have to either address it, and, you know, apply for permits, that type of thing with us. So we're going through that analysis now, and we'll brief you on that as, as it evolves. And that's, that's all I have. Any questions?
Excellent. Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Hearing no questions. Madam Manager, let's go back to the report of the city attorney.
Oh, that's right. Item number seven, Report of the City Attorney.
No report by the city attorney.
Thank you, sir. Next item?
The next item is item number nine. Is there anything else under Committee Report, not previously covered, under the presentation to Senator Garcia?
I don't have anything. Well, actually, no, yeah, I do. Today, I presented the, the best, the three best plaque that we, you also graciously supported to the rec center for them being awarded that distinguished best of three. And the children were very, very happy. And John was, was beaming with pride. So it was very nice. That's all I have.
I guess I briefly, I already told the manager, and the clerk was out, obviously, but I included her in the email as well, that Representative Demi Bosata-Cabrera will be coming in for a similar presentation as we gave to Eliana, to Senator Garcia, today on June 16th, in the next meeting. Representative Demi Bosata-Cabrera, our state representative for this district.
Okay. Next item?
Thank you. Item 10A on your agenda is Unfinished Business. Item 10, Unfinished Business, A. Update of the Selection of the Date for the Tree Dedication Ceremony in Memory of Inés Suárez. This was deferred from the City Commission meeting held on April 21st, 2021. Yes. Okay. So I spoke to Commissioner Blanca. I also spoke to Purita Martín, the daughter of Commissioner Suárez and Inés Suárez. We advised her that initially, Commissioner Blanca wanted a June 16th date for the planting of the tree and the dedication. The problem is, is that we cannot get a plaque ready and back to us for that date. So I spoke to Purita, and she agreed that June 30th would be a good tentative date for that presentation at 10 o'clock in the morning. And as soon as Juan gets back, I don't know whether you saw the email that I sent him this afternoon?
I did.
As soon as Juan gets back, he's going to be in contact with the company that we have ordered plaques from, bronze plaques in the past, so that we could actually do the, the planting of the tree, along with the unveiling of the plaque for the dedication for Mrs. Suárez, in honor of Mrs. Suárez. And so I have already sent a calendar, a tentative calendar, for June 30th. We are going to be on the phone with the vendor tomorrow, and as soon as we can get this going, we will confirm, the closer we get to the event, we'll confirm everyone's participation. Purita did advise me that she would, they're inviting family and close friends of the family, so she probably will be sharing a guest list with us, so that we can send them a, a program for the unveiling.
Excellent.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item under Unfinished Business is, I'm sorry, that's, that was moved in the amended agenda, and I'm looking at the old agenda here. The amended agenda, for some reason, Madam Mayor, I have to advise you that we have a, an agenda that has two identical items. And for some reason, when we send them for copying, we basically access the wrong agenda. But basically, what I'd like to do is get your authority to remove item 10B from the agenda, because you will find that same, very same item under 11B in your revised agenda.
Yes, ma'am. Duly noted.
Thank you very much. That takes us to 11, item 11, New Business Agenda Items. Report on the 2021 Legislative Session by Governmental Affairs Consultant Mario Bailey from Converge. I received a text message moments ago from Jonathan Kilman and Mario Bailey, representing us from Converge. And they advised us that they are, they were waiting to be let in on Zoom.
Oh, no.
So I guess somehow, they got an invitation from the city. I don't know who from, but definitely, I told, I had advised Mario that we had gone back to in-person meetings. So they are extending, they, they say they, you know, the text message says, we feel terrible about this. And so I said, it's, it's too late for you to head out. They're coming from, from a distance.
Of course, no, of course, of course.
So we, I told them, we would offer to put this back on the agenda on June 16th. And so since we are having another representative visit the city at that time, it may be beneficial for us to hear from them as well at that time.
If that works for them, that is perfectly fine.
So it's a request for deferral until June 16th.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Let me note this. All right. The next item is 11B on the New Business Agenda. It's Report and Recommendation by the Office of the City Manager, Reference Changes to the Financing of the 2022 Garbage Truck. As you know, we have been working closely for months now with City National Bank on getting a, on, on a term sheet, as provided by them, for a loan for the garbage truck. Unfortunately, a loan turned into a bond somehow. That was never disclosed to us when we first received a, a proposal for the loan for City National Bank. They claimed that the, the language in there is that we needed to abide by whatever conditions set by the bank. The bank attorney, who was in contact with our city attorney on numerous occasions, as well as the bank representative, talked to our city attorney and told them basically that they were following policy. There was nothing we could do. We had to basically hire bond counsel. So there would be an additional cost of anywhere, Mr. Villalobos, I'm sorry?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand, upwards of $10,000, to bring this loan to a closure. So I was not feeling very comfortable about this, because we had a maximum amount of money approved by this commission of $177,406. So that meant that we would have had to take money from our coffers to bring this to a closure, to pay for bond counsel. That said, I stepped out of my comfort zone and I contacted Inter-American Bank, who diligently and very swiftly provided us with a proposal for financing our garbage truck. In a not, they provided us with a non-binding term sheet with several options to finance the equipment. And they, basically, their first option is they offered us a 2.85% fixed rate for five years. This loan, when compared to the loan from City National Bank, will save the city upwards of $50,000, including the expense related to bond counsel. So in our, in our opinion, in our humble opinion, I think this is a no-brainer. I am very confident that we will be able to pay for this equipment in five years rather than ten. The yearly payments are $38,111.28, and we will be paying a total of $190,556.40 with Inter-American Bank versus $225,000 with City National. So it, it seems to me that we would be best served if we went with this proposal from Inter-American Bank. So that would be our recommendation for you to rescind a previous approval, for us to pursue a City National Bank loan, and award, or approve the recommendation to change the financing to a loan, a simple loan, and basically, the collateral would be the 2022 garbage truck itself, and approve the term sheet provided to us by Inter-American Bank for a period of five years.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney, I'm assuming you've looked at this non-bidding term sheet, and it meets with your approval?
Yes, it would. As a matter of fact, I think that it was an excellent move. They, in addition, the prior bank wanted to link this particular loan with a bond issued six years ago.
Six years ago, for the construction of the Public Services Building.
So we thought that it was not reasonable for us to bind the city with something that was signed five years ago, and it would certainly cost the city quite a bit of money. And so we, we think that that would be an excellent idea. Now, I did talk to the city manager about when and how to sign this particular commitment with the bank, since we don't know when the truck is going to be here.
Correct. And as you know, Juan is on vacation. That's why he's not here today. I'm going to have him go back to the trucking company and find out from the salesman as to when the expectation is for delivery, so that it concurs with the closing of the loan, so that we're not paying interest unless we have the truck in hand.
Was there any stipulation as to how long they will give us to sign this? I don't see any, any dates on here. So how long will they allow us to not sign this?
Well, since it's not mentioned there, they did express to me verbally that they would work with us. And obviously, I have to get back to them and let them know when we expect the truck, to see how soon, how long it would take to basically prepare the loan and for us to sign.
Verbal always worries me.
Yes.
So I'd rather get right in writing, not verbal.
Right. And we can ask them to update the term sheet, if this is the way we're going to go, if you will accept our recommendation. I will get them to commit to telling us how long they will hold this interest for us.
Perfect.
Okay.
So at this, at this time, you need us to rescind the previous resolution?
All the previous resolutions.
All the previous resolutions. So we are, we are...
And it would be...
This is, because this is a report and recommendation.
Right. And that, that will take you to item 11C, Madam Mayor.
Correct. Why don't you read items, items?
Yes, ma'am. A Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission Rescinding Resolution 2021, and that one does not have a number. It did not have an executed number. It will as soon as the clerk gets back, and authorizing the city manager to accept a proposal for financing, for, for a financing loan from Inter-American Bank for a period of five years at an interest rate of 2.85% in the amount of $177,406, plus an estimated cost of $650 for closing cost, providing for a collateral, the 2022 garbage truck, providing for a yearly repayment in the amount of $38,111.28, instructing the Office of the City Manager to proceed with securing the financing, and instructing the city manager to make the budgetary provisions for a period of the next five years to ensure the repayment of the garbage truck, providing for effective date. Mayor and City Commission.
I need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Call the vote.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Suárez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Diaz-Padrón?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. The next item on the agenda is item number 12, and it's Consent Agenda Items.
Fall in favor?
Mayor, I have to, I want to make a comment before you close this.
With this last item?
No, no, no. I just want to make, before you go to the next item, I want to make a comment, because Mr. Mario Bailey from Converge is not here. But let me tell you, as long I know, the, the budget for the state was 11 billions, and the governor signed the budget today. He bid oh 1.5 billion. But the $350,000 from the government... But the $350,000 from the water project in Miami, West Miami, was not touched. It's okay. And the money from the, from the senior center, $69,000, also is okay. Was not. So our projects, none of them were vetoed. So our money is sure is already in in the budget. It was approved.
Thank you, Vice Commissioner. And I was actually going to going to say that during Mario's presentation, that once again, our legislative team has done wonders for us. They've they've represented us, I mean, they got us a million, helped with a million dollars in the last session, and this year, they they helped us secure that 350. So once again, they're they're doing exactly what they said they would do for us and working really hard up there in Tallahassee. So I was going to thank him when he was here, but we will say this again when he's here on the, at the June 16 meeting. We, you and I, we'll thank him as a group for for all their hard work that they do for us.
So we are safe.
Yes, we are. Thank you, sir. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. The next item is Consent Agenda Items. All in favor? Aye. Next item?
Good of, number, item number 13 is the Good of the Order.
I think we're missing an item.
We're missing one.
12-8.
12-8.
No, that was just...
That's Consent Agenda Item?
We just passed it. That was a Consent Agenda Item.
Should we comment on that? I think that's important. Vice Mayor, can you talk about that a little bit? Because, you know, I think this is a really important thing, and we should talk about it.
Would you like the resolution?
We'd have to pull it and...
Yeah, I mean, first of all, yeah, read the resolution if you if you...
Well, then, are you requesting to pull this?
Yes.
Okay. We, Madam Manager, we, the vice mayor's requesting to pull this?
Yes. Consent Agenda Items, A, A Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami condemning hatred and violence against the Jewish community, denouncing anti-Israel rhetoric from elected officials and the media, and reaffirming that the Jewish people must be treated with dignity and respect. Sponsored by Vice Mayor Diaz-Padron.
I make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. And thank you for bringing this up.
No, yeah, and, you know, obviously, we've all seen what the Jewish community has gone through in the last couple of weeks, especially following the conflicts in the Middle East and with Israel. But I will say, you know, when this resolution was put out as proposal, the mayor, Paul Gables, called me yesterday. They're also putting an agenda, which is very important for them, because they've actually had some, a lot of graffiti and swastikas and and put all over their their community, which I'm grateful hasn't happened in this community yet, and hopefully it won't. And Miami Lakes as well requested this 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 resolution, to pass it in their city in support of the community. Israel Miami called me when they saw the proposal. They're they're very thankful, and I'm going to tell them that it passed, they're very thankful for this commission in always supporting the Jewish community, because we've had a very strong Jewish community in the past in West Miami. And hopefully, after COVID, when when the temple reopened, I know it's been closed for a little bit, it will be a strong community once again in West Miami. But thank you for for passing this resolution. I thank you, and and, you know, hopefully, we won't have any of the incidents that have happened around the nation, unfortunately, in Miami, in our city.
Next item, Madam Manager.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
The Good of the Order, anything for Good of the Order?
I'm sorry. Number 13, Good of the Order.
Nothing Good of the Order. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We need to adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you. I mean... Thank you. 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 Thank you.